Mr. Board Secretary, has this meeting been done as opposed to a public meeting?
Yes, it has, Mr. Mackin.
Everybody please stand and join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You can roll call, please. Mrs. Mackin.
Here.
Mrs. Mackin.
Here.
Mr. Bishaw.
Here.
Mr. Syack.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. Lembo.
Here.
Mrs. Stratten.
Here.
Mr. Tratt.
Here.
And Mr. Mackin. President. Dr. Alphano, we have a presentation?
Yes, Mr. Mackin.
Mrs. DeAndre, would you like to come up with me, please?
I know there's a -- we put out about forty or fifty copies of the presentation, so hopefully you have a copy of the presentation. It sort of looks like this, and there's also a blue sheet of some of the cuts that we made since the initial inception of the budget that we had about, I believe it was on March 2nd, if I recall. So I'm going to just summarize this. You have the information if you have any questions. Certainly at the end we will have, answer them. I will say this, so that you're aware. The budget vote is on April 20th, and certainly most of these things that are in the budget, obviously, is contingent upon us passing a budget. And I'm going to go through it quickly. If anybody has any questions when we're done. Budget presentations, obviously, we've had people, but right now, we've had a budget meeting on the 8th, the 16th of February, March 22nd, March 24th, March 25th, March 29th, and now we're at the Budget Public Hearing, which is the 30th, which finalizes our budget, and the Board takes its final vote, and this goes out to the public, and this is what you will see on the ballot on the 20th of April. We still have two more left, the Mayor and Council presentation, which is at the Voting Chambers on April 12th, and we also have the Middle School, High School PTO presentation, which is also at the High School on April 15th. We also have Candidates Night, which will be April 15th as well, which I believe is at the Samson Upper Elementary School, which will start at 7:30. The High School and Middle School Presbyt- presentation will start at 6:30, so that we can get to both places at one time. We're pretty good. Reasons for increases. We go through this again. I'm not going to spend much time on this slide. Yes, a lot of the big ticket items that add up to the 90% are, for example, salaries are definitely negotiated, and those are things that can be swayed one way or the other, but salaries and benefits are predominantly 75, 76% of our budget. You can see that 90% of our budget, as I call it, is fixed. And subsequently, look at the tuition line on the top. We do almost 5, 6% of tuition. That means those are our special education students that we send out to other private schools for education that we can't do internally, and that has dropped considerably. Even though we lost $3.7 million, we lost over 5% of our operating budget, and I'll go over that in a second. We still are maintaining the things that are not stated as being cut. All-day kindergarten, courtesy busing for youngsters from grade K to 5 is still in the budget. Those two items alone probably add up to about $750,000 to $800,000. So it's a considerable risk if this budget goes down. Technology upgrades, we still have some stuff in the budget to try to keep our technology infrastructure up and running, and we still have about, oh, a couple hundred thousand dollars in consumables and supplies, so that we can continue to do what we've been doing with this new reading series and some of the mask up, which is far as supplemental materials are concerned. As you can see, our original forecasted budget was in the left-hand column. You can see we've added up to $895,000. The only thing really left in this budget from the initial draft that we had is we got rid of all new staff. I mean, new, by that I mean they're not employed this year. So we have not cut any existing staff, but we cut, if you go down Y, you'll see that we cut about $335,000 worth of staff and about, oh, about 90, about $105,000 in benefits. The only thing that we left in were special education programs, and these are for the youngsters that we're bringing back from our collaborative program, which is a preschool which we are now going to educate internally at the SUEEs. So obviously, we're bringing students back from an outside placement. We are going to obviously save money, because we're saving it on the tuition end. So it's not like we're spending extra money there, we're just putting it into a different pie down. So technically, that $380,000 is really about $200,000, which predominantly is for work books, as I just said, and some additional textbooks that we have to have, because we need to replace the ones that get stolen or lost. As you can see, last year, and this is how we made up $3.7 million in the budget, is that our capital project budget really went from $2.4 million last year down to about $253,000 this year. So we made up about $2.1 million in that account alone. Go to the next item. And this is just the staffing. We have close to 800 staff in the district. And also, how many students in the district right now we're pushing, 6,000. When I came here, 10 years ago, that figure was close to 5,000. So we've picked up, not 5,000, I'd say about 5,500. We've picked up about 500 students, maybe more than that, in the 10 years I've been here. And this is just a comparison, and again, I'm not going to beat this to death. You can go online, you can read through it, and as you see, Sayoville's a very efficiently run district. First means number of students to administrators. We are approximately 60 to 1 higher than the average state grade. Number of faculty to administrators, we are again, almost 4 to 1 more. Number of students to support services, which are our guidance counselors and child study team people, over 13 to 1 more than the state. And number of students to teacher is just 1, and that's good, that we keep our students and teachers ratio to a lower percentage, because that's the goal, to try and keep class sizes down. Remember, I said this in the paper, and I'm going to say it again, we're only as good as the people in the trenches. We're only, you're going to have the greatest programs in the world, the greatest textbooks, if you don't have the people teaching them, then subsequently you're going to suffer. Our goal is to continue to keep our class sizes at the levels that they are right now, and to keep our support staff at the levels that they are right now. And right now, in this budget, there are no staff, instructional staff, that are going to be reduced. The state average is $13,600 per student. Ours is $10,377, that's $3255. Do the math, we're about $14 million below adequate save. We are a very well, efficiently run school district. That's why we need to get killed when the 5% hit, because we've been dealing with this issue for the 10 years I've been here. This just gives you an overview, a breakdown of where the $10,377 comes from, and instruction, we're about 80% of what the state is, and you can go right down, where you can see operation and maintenance is we're very low, we're 64% of what the state spends. So we are again, a very efficiently run district, and that just breaks it down from each category. I think this is a very telling slide, because people say, "Where are we in the county? How do we rank with all the other schools in this county?" Well, what I did was, I took every similar school district in this county, and if you could see, we are the lowest per pupil and most efficiently run school district in the county of our size. $10,377, and we're ranked 4th in the state. And you can see, when you average out all those different per pupil expenditures, we are almost $2,300 less on average than every other district in the county. And I think there's only one district in the county that doesn't fall into our category that spends less in that South River, and they probably are the number one district in the state. I'm not so sure that's a good category to be in, but that's where they're at, and we're just right behind them. Okay? We're again, 4th ranked for the last two years. We lost $3.7 million in state aid. And if you look at that, and as we go to the next slide, this is a revenue comparison. We lost 17% of our state aid last year, which is about 25% of our budget, so we took a big hit last year. Our revenue dropped like 2%. And people say, "Well, why did our taxes go up?" Well, that's the reason why the taxes went up, is because we've lost 2% of our revenue from last year, which came out to be $3.7 million, and I'll explain it a little bit easier next. Local taxes, we, our tax levy is, Mr. DeAndre, what's the tax levy can go up to? 4%. And we kept it at 2.97. On average, that probably could have went up if we had to, another $700,000. We sort of met halfway. The Governor was saying 2.1 to 2. We didn't want to go to 4, so we stopped at about 2.97, so we didn't have to make drastic cuts in personnel, and I thank the Board for that. Appropriations. It's very clear that, you know, we got rid of a lot of new staff, which is that top line there, a lot of people look at salaries, that's budget, the budget, that's not actual, so there's a lot of different stuff in that line item. And our appropriation, that's what we appropriate, this is not actual numbers, what we plan to spend, dropped 2%, which is $1.5 million. Let me explain. If you do the math, you have $3.7 million that we lost in state aid. Now, to make up that $3.7 million, we took $700,000 additional in permanent surplus. That drops it down to $3 million. We dropped our appropriation by 1.5, so that dropped our total to 1.5, and that was the amount that we needed in taxes to make our balanced budget. So that's where you come up with the $88. And 88.53, and the average says home of 144. And this is a kind of chronology of where we've been, '06, '07, we're at 200, and this year we're a little, a little under $80, $89. That's proposed. And then we talk about, if this budget does go down, obviously, class sizes are going to increase, because if we have to, out of attrition, we may not, we may reduce staff. Out of breakage, we may, obviously, make a few dollars. And unfortunately, we may have to reduce staff in regard to, if the, if the budget goes down, it goes to the council, if the council, the mayor council decide to cut a large chunk of it, we're going to have to make it up somehow, some way, and we really don't have a lot of room over this year. And the budget vote is April 20th. And it's from 12 o'clock to 9 o'clock. Any questions? Thank you very much. Mr. DeAndre, you were excellent.
Hey, Dr. Alphano, you want to take this to your report?
Thank you, Mr. Mackin. On page 1, Buildings and Grounds, we have no report. Section 2 is the proposed budget.
Dr. Alphano?
Yes, sir.
I sent an email to the Board. On Friday, we received notification, there was an adjustment to the state aid figure. There's a $439 difference. I just took it out of one side. One tuition line item, put it in the other, if they make sense, didn't make any changes. But that's the only difference from the advertised budget.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndre. The local tax levy is $56,096,97, and the proposed budget, including debt surfs, is B is the disposal of equipment. C is withdrawn from your statement, and that's on your addendum. D is a bid for transportation approval, and again, I have to thank Ms. Sutherland for the comprehensive equity plan. It is a very extensive report, and it's not easy, feasibly completed, so I want to thank her for completing that. Also, her professional development plan is a monster. This is something that comes out from the county, and very few districts first shot around, get it approved. I'm confident, as usual, that it will be approved. I and J are on the addendum. This is our new MDF room, which we're having a couple of problems with because of the different electrical problems that we've had. We've blown out a couple of servers and things of that nature, so we really want to upgrade that. And J is the Wilson School Heating System upgrades, and we are rejecting those bids due to the fact that there was a, Mr. DeAndre, just want to comment on that, what exactly was involved with the bids?
The easiest way to explain it is that there was an adjustment made by one of the manufacturers that the Board, that the Board architect was not aware of, so we have to reject the bids at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndre. Any questions with section 2? With none, moving to 3. There's a medical leave, an adjustment due to a black seal obtained, approval of employment. That is it for section 3. Any questions with section 3? Section 4 is personnel surgery. We have an employment, and on the addendum, we have an individual taking over for maternity leave as well, so we have two new staff members. Any questions with section 4? With none, 5, 6, 7, and 8, there is no report. Thank you. That concludes my report. Mr. President.
Can I have a second?
Ms. Sutherland would like to, Ed, a thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to extend my appreciation and thanks to all the members of the District Technology Committee. The committee is headed by Mrs. Sandy Hall, Kevin Syack, board member, sits on the committee. Other members are Principal Edward Agulis, Supervisor Bill Anshutz, Student Information Systems Manager Karen Ranowitz, Teachers Mary Ann Kobell, Pat Daly, Barbara DeSantis, Eric Locke Malloy, Pam Gunter, Greg Jugoo, Karen Perno, and Lori Schmidt. The Board got a copy of a document in excess of 55 pages. The committee has been working on this document for over six months. This document is what will title us to E-rate. That's a special discounted rate for our computer technology internet connections. I am sincerely grateful to each member of that committee. It is a fabulous report. Last year's technology plan was used by the Executive County Superintendent of Schools as the model for the county, and there is no doubt in my mind that this year's plan will serve as the same. My thanks to the committee.
At this time, I might open up for the public for any questions or comments on the agenda item that includes the budget that was presented to you earlier. Anybody like to come up to the public microphone, please, state your name and address for the Mrs. Bloom.
Good evening. Lucy Bloom, President of the Sayoville Education Association. I would like to read a little statement this evening at your pleasure, okay? "On behalf of the over 700 members of the Sayoville Education Association who teach and otherwise care for the children of Sayoville, I would like to thank the Board for their efforts in creating a budget that resulted in no loss of personnel. We would have liked to have seen the Board go to cap to allow for a little more flexibility in the event that the school budget vote should require further cuts. We know these are the worst of times, but our members are counting on us to do the right thing, and so we look forward to negotiating a fair and equitable settlement of our contract. We are seeing our colleagues statewide take massive cuts, and we are concerned for our profession. We would like the public to know that although this Governor would paint us as such, we are not the enemy. The enemy is the political machine in Trenton, who has spent its budgets and underfunded our pensions for more than 15 years. We would like the public to know that our members pay into their health benefits and have done so for the past 12 years when no other districts did. We would like the public to know that our members, which include teachers, secretaries, paraprofessionals, transportation workers, cafeteria workers, guidance counselors, and security guards, voluntarily contribute to our philanthropic fund, which provides five $1,000 scholarships every year to our graduating seniors from the high school. We too are taxpayers, or the Governor would like it to appear otherwise. We will pay tax increases as well. The funding cuts that have been made to education hurt us, but more importantly, they hurt the children when we serve. The politicians that we have elected need to remember that without teachers, no other profession would be possible. Each and every one of them is where they are today, because somewhere along the way, a teacher taught them everything they know. Shame on them for not allowing the children of New Jersey to have the same opportunities. We urge the public to pass this budget, so that no other services will be cut for the students of Sayoville. Now more than ever, they need us to fight for them. Through all the turmoil, we will continue to serve this community, and we look forward to serving its children for many years to come. Thank you."
Thank you, Mrs. Bloom. Let me just say that, thank you for the letter. I certainly got involved in this business, because I feel that education is very important. It's the best gift that parents can give their children. I've had three daughters that graduated through the ranks in Sayoville and graduated from this very building, and they remind me every day that I started the construction too late, because none of them really was able to benefit from it, but that's okay. They all got great education here. And I've always been an advocate of teachers. I believe that teachers are on a front line of defense. This country, the greatest country on the third planet from the sun, will never be defeated anywhere on any battlefield, and if anything does cause this country to fall, will be, of course, we fail to academically educate, character development our young people. So if you're a teacher, in my mind, you are on the front lines of defense, of national security, when you come to work every day, because that's going to keep America in the forefront and keep us a superpower. Having said that, you know, we've put a lot of time into this budget to come up with something we thought was fair. I'm a taxpayer too, and I'm certainly concerned about property taxes. But I'm equally or more concerned about property values, and the school district is the soul of a town. I met frequently with the Board President of South River, the Board President I had dinner with last week from South Amboy to discuss things of mutual interest. And a lot of districts, including those, are letting go a great number of teachers, support staff, they've eliminated sports programs, they have eliminated kindergarten, they don't have busing, and their taxes went to cap, which increases taxes much greater than what we have done here. And I often thought about, you know, what are we doing right here in Sayoville? And Dr. Alphano was correct, this district is an efficient district, and it has been long before I even had a thought about coming on the Board of Education. But now that I am here and I see from a different perspective and comparison to other districts, and that's according to the state, we're doing quite well. Do we want to raise taxes in this time of economic concern? I have to balance that with, what are we jeopardizing here? Sayoville is unique. I challenge anyone to go live somewhere else in Middlesex County and pay lower taxes than you do here and get what you get. And I'm talking about not just what the school district offers, about, I like going to the dog park, I like jogging in the nature preserve, I like going down to the once the boats on the River Road. All these things that are available here in Sayoville, for what we pay, we get a pretty good bang for the buck. So this, this Board of Education, and I'm speaking for everybody, is not going to go in and decimate our school district and go down to zero budget and eliminate these things that are very important, full-day kindergarten, courtesy busing. I think we've been down the road, no pun intended, with courtesy busing in the past, and that has caused some concern, and my own child lost courtesy busing. We don't want to do that with K-2.5s, and many districts are going from half-day kindergarten to no kindergarten, we're able to maintain a full-day kindergarten. And we're doing that, what I feel is a modest tax increase. Now, I know tax increases are certainly a matter of perception, but if you want to live where taxes are very low, there's plenty of room, and I've been to places like Boise, Idaho, and Rapid City, South Dakota, but we live in New Jersey, and there's no greater, you know, turmoil within me to try to be fair to our district and to come up with a tax increase that is fair to the most population. And I know I have this argument all the time with my mother about, you know, about increasing taxes and, you know, but this is a societal, a societal concern. And we're in this together, this is Team Sayoville, and this is our town. And I often ask people, "Why do you move to Sayoville?" And I know Dennis Bello's going to talk to me about this, because you have said this before in public, that they don't move to Sayoville, not for Bello's sports bar. They move to Sayoville because we have a damn good school district, we have generally low tax rate, we got, we're pretty good with a low crime rate. And I don't think we ought to mess with either one of those, as long as we're living here in Sayoville. There's people that are going to disagree with me, I understand that education costs money, but I think ignorance costs society a hell of a lot more. And these are the kind of things that we thought about when we formed the budget that we presented tonight. Is the budget going to pass? I always hope so. If I, I've studied probabilities and statistics, and I look back and record in Sayoville, chances are it may not. But I think everybody needs to understand that this is important, that everybody go out and vote and do your civic duty. Like I said, we're all in this together, and like many of you, I've just done my taxes or my accounting, and he pointed out something to me, that I pay more in social security taxes than I pay in real estate taxes here in Sayoville. And I'm okay with that, because I want seasoned citizens to live a life that commensurate with being an American. And I think we're in this together. I'm funding that, and my account tells me, "Don't ever count on you getting that." And you fund, you know, the education of our children. I've also used the fact that if you want to sell your house, and a young couple comes with a couple of kids, and they ask you, "Hey," like I do when I go to, "How's the school district?" Well, we got 30 kids in the class, we got no sports programs, we have no busing, we have no kindergarten. I think they may go elsewhere. When you looked at that slide about Olbridge, everybody likes to compare us to Olbridge. Olbridge spends about $1,000 more a student than we do. And if I had that here with 6,000 students, I'd have $6 million more dollars in our budget. But we don't, and our education is comparable with Olbridge, and I say our sports programs are better. I often said this at the microphone, I'll say it again. If I have to tell kids they can't play sports, or I have to increase class size to 30 kids, I'll resign from the Board of Education, I would consider that a personal failure. So this is the budget we're proposing. We're proposing this to the residents of Sayoville. We have a damn good school district, and I, and I think that's arguable and certainly is defensible. I think I've said enough. Thank you. Anybody?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Bloom brought up that they already pay health benefits, and now that the law has changed to 1.5%, how does that change from a budget perspective, as far, from an aggregate perspective? Is the number going to be higher or lower?
1.5% does not help the district. It doesn't help anything.
So if they pay more now than 1.5%? I just wanted to clarify that.
And they have, quite a number. Twelve years. Thank you, Mrs. Bloom. Anyone else from the public like to speak? Please be mindful that I will open up again for any information to become before the Board. This was just for anything on the agenda of the budget. Seeing none, I'll close it for the public, and I'll take a motion to accept and file the superintendent's report. Be mindful, Board members, that a yes vote, you're also approving the budget that we're going to send forward.
I'm second.
Okay, you've got Mr. Clark, and I have Mr. Syack. You can roll call.
Mrs. Mackin.
I would vote no on 2A, and...
Which is the budget?
Oh, I get it. And page 2, at the technology plan, I didn't get a copy, so I'm going to abstain, and can you put a copy in my mouth this week?
I can't, it was, it was emailed.
I know, but, and when I checked my email on the weekend too, since I couldn't get it, I knew I couldn't read it that quickly, and I went, you know, I would have never been able to read it. If I was to pick it up this week, I would have never been able to read it since it went out.
I realize it's 55 pages.
Yeah, I knew it, I knew it was a large report.
Okay.
Yes to everything else?
Yes.
Mr. Bishaw?
Yes.
Mr. Syack?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Lembo?
Yes.
Mrs. Stratten?
Yes.
Mrs. Tratt?
Yes.
And Mr. Mackin.
Yes, with no exceptions. Next item is background information.
Can we get an explanation as to why Mrs. Backo voted no? I'm assuming it's the same explanation as last week, but I know that some other people...
If Mrs. Backo wishes to provide that.
It's pretty much the same explanation as I went through last week, but if you'd like to hear it again.
That's your call.
Some of the problems I had with some of the things that were in the budget or not in the budget. There was one line item which was, came to $46,000, was for a referendum that we're putting out on solar power. What I was hoping for was to see the solar power at the same time as the April election, so we went and had it in...
so we wouldn't have incurred additional costs for that. We were, there were some cuts that were made. A high school teacher, many of the supplies, the library supplies, the late buses, mostly general supplies and textbooks. I would have liked to see those cuts not to be as drastic along with the custodians, and I would have liked to have seen, this year, we, from what I was told, the Finance Committee projected a balance of a 2% in surplus, which we really have not projected in the past years. Mostly in the past years, our projections, we've projected a much lower percentage. It's usually come in higher, as most of you saw when Governor Christie was able to take some of our surplus money. So I'd have liked to have that surplus money reduced as well and use that towards some of the supplies and the buses and some of the other things that were cut.
Thank you for your thorough explanation, Mrs. Backo.
Just a follow-up comment. I guess the main reason I asked Mrs. Backo to, to explain her vote is, you know, we heard the same explanation last week, and I guess my, my one concern is, we're certainly a board of nine people, we have nine different opinions. I know if we asked the administrative team, which is over to the left, about items which they believe should be in, items which they believe should be out, that you would probably get 35 different opinions from the 20 people who are sitting over there with regard to things that should be in versus out, and no real consensus, because there are nine people. But yet, they were able to come together and recommend a budget to us, and I think it's up to us as a board to look beyond individual line items and saying that, you know, I'm unhappy because we didn't spend $20,000 on textbooks, I would have preferred it be in supplies, or a referendum versus supplies. We're voting on a huge budget, which basically is going to be responsible for operating our entire district. And my concern is that one no vote on the board is basically going to send a message to the community that the budget isn't valid. And I hope that Mrs. Backo's concerns about reclasses between individual line items just basically explains that it's a bucketing issue and not necessarily a whole invalid budget issue.
Well, it's, well, I could disagree with some of what you said. The budget, a lot of those budget cuts were, did not come from the 35 people. They came from a finance committee, or they came from a very last-minute cut that was done last week. So to say the 35 people made that budget, and I'm disagreeing with 35 people, I, I can't necessarily agree with that. And the significant, when you say buckets, when you look at a surplus bucket, that to me is a completely separate bucket. That's always the bucket that gets taken, whether it be from the Borough Council, this year from the governor. So to appropriate those numbers elsewhere, I think is a significant bucket.
I just have a concern, because as I said, we're, we're basically sending a terrible message out to the community, and at the end of the day, we're putting staffs' lives, our staff's jobs at risk, and we're putting our children at risk. Because we don't know what's going to end up if the budget goes down.
We can disagree. Yes, we have no problem with that. We respect each other's opinions. I thought that was a thorough explanation. But I will take an 8-1 vote anyway, and I'd like you to continue with the roll call. Okay. Any questions? Well, let's press them. Thank you for your interest, Mrs. Backo. Background information. Sayoville Memorial High School dedication plaque. Who wants to take that?
What I have is, um, I would like the board to review the, uh, the way the plaque will read when we do the dedication on May 14th, and, um, I ask if there's any concerns or comments that I hear, know about them now, because this is going to go to the, I'm going to start getting proofs on the plaque, so I don't know the direction.
Does anybody have any, everybody's name is spelled correctly? I guess one thing, if I need to check.
I, I, go ahead.
The only thing I, I noticed, and you might want to check with him, but I know former board member Danny DiPaolo always shoots his middle initial. Danny J. DiPaolo, you may want to check with him, find out if he wants it, but I just know that that was the way he always addressed himself when he was on the board.
I'll look at one of numerous plaques in the district.
Just to clarify, I'm assuming the past members were chosen because they were involved in the initial referendum process?
Anyone who sat on the board during this referendum process, I included on the...
Okay, so no, that's exactly the, the number of people that were...
Those are the people, that's why I'm asking. I don't believe I missed anyone. Put it through people, so...
That's it.
I, I don't believe we've missed anyone.
And I have a comment. So I'm, this is on May 14th, and by then, there may be one or two new board members, and I have a question, whether or not they should be put on as well.
They would have been part of the referendum.
And, and to me, the big justification out of it is, Mrs. Stratt has been here for three years through the, the bulk of the construction. I would hate to see her name moved to a past board member by virtue of the fact that we're holding the dedication month after the election.
Who's paying the tabards?
Right now, it's coming out of the referendum. There was a signage allowance in the contractor's contract, but since we're in the close-out process, and there weren't sufficient funds to cover it, we're just going to take the cost out of the, um...
I have a, I have a recommendation, so.
I know. I know, that's the fifth item.
Yes, that's the fifth. Okay, anybody have any problems with the formatting of it? Any spelling, any? Sayoville's spelled right, so we're okay. All right? Next issue. Dr. Afana, you want to take this one?
I just need to know. I just have a direction.
Recap.
Recap. Okay. Basically, this organization would like to use the SUES, I believe it's every Friday during the 2010-11 school year, at a very reduced rate. And we did some research that there are other districts that do allow them to use the facility almost free. So if we're going to allow them, first thing is, we're going to allow them to use it, which I think we were, we were okay with that. The question was whether, how much we were going to charge them. There, there was, I believe there was like four districts that were, that, or they are involved with. I got some information back to that did respond back, the other two did not. And I'm just looking through some direction, because he calls about once a week.
I have a question.
Mrs. Stratt?
It's 100% Sayoville's, Sayoville's...
According to what he wrote, I mean, we could put that in the, in the contract, if that's what you want, but as far as I know, it's supposed to be 100% of our case. And I know he wants it at a relatively reduced rate, whatever that rate is. If we're willing to do it, we can, we can just say initially, we can come up with a price, just as long as I know that we're in the ballpark. In other words, some of the things that I, that I told you, that we sent to you over the last couple of months, so it would be at a relatively reduced rate, and what he would be willing to, if, if you want, Mr. Mackinon, maybe, um, as part of, I guess, the Buildings and Grounds, or that, we could get together as a committee and finish this up. Unless you just want to give me a, because this, I, I've been bouncing this around for the last six months.
I, I don't like the practice bleeding, okay? So let's, does anybody have an issue with this?
What's the rate? Do we have a...
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, I know...
What is our policy? We've got this policy.
Our policy is, I believe it's, um, to use a classroom, it's 100...
I believe on $125 a classroom.
It's 125 classroom, and they, right now, they said they're going to use, I believe it was four. So obviously, they don't want to spend $500 a night. They, they're at a very reduced rate, where some organizations were charging them $100 a night for the use of the, of the facility, because it was more community-oriented. And we were, we were bouncing that around, whether we wanted to do that or not. Like, I agree with you, Mr. Mackinon, I don't want to, you know, believe anymore, but this has been going on for a while now, and I need to, you know...
And this is not the first time such a request has come up. I think what we need is a policy that basically addresses a volume discount situation, where if you're going to rent for an extended period of time, we give a certain percentage off of the rates.
Just tell me what you want me to do.
I remember you searched me correctly. You're, you're in charge of policy, Mack.
So you want to leave it up? But the thing is, Mr. Mackinon, what, what, what guidelines do we want here?
Correct.
No, just give, just give me like, for instance, are we going to, are we, like, if it's a major organization?
Where, where else is, is this individual using this school, is educating a town's kids in their town school? What are they paying?
Is this $590?
You said $100.
It was, it was around $100 a day. It was, it was relatively nothing.
And, and some charged zero, but charged $35 for electric and gas and...
Right, they, they charged utility fees. I mean, we could say it's $100 for utility fees and whatever else we want to call it.
That sounds like a good one. Anybody have any problems with that?
A night.
Okay.
So during, during the course of the year, you're talking about 100 times 40, you make about four brackets.
Mr. Vishal?
Well, the issue that arises with this is that this gentleman that wants to run this school is charging the students to enroll in this program. This isn't free. So these students that are taking this extracurricular activity are paying for it, and I don't know what he's charging them. I think what we should do is table this until we have a chance to go into executive with numbers and then bring it to the public for a discussion.
I don't think this is, needs to be discussed in executive. I mean, this is...
I don't think it's a, it's a closed item. Well, it could be, because you're, you're...
You know, we allow, we allow, we allow sports teams to use our facilities, and those kids pay to be involved in that activity, too. So I, to me, this is too easy. We have an individual that was referred to us by the mayor that's used our schools before. My, my understanding is that they are probably been our best tenants, they, they keep it clean, they follow the rules. They're, whatever they're doing, they're, the education that deals with Sayoville children, Sayoville public building. Any more?
How about 200? I'm sorry, what? 200?
They have a bit. It sounds like it.
What are the other districts hanging again in the area?
100 or 0.
Very, very little.
$100 for the night.
Very little. Some was like 35. Some was like 35.
And what do we teach them again?
They're teaching their, uh, their culture. They're not, we're not teaching them.
I, I say, well, if, if we was making that suggestion of $200, I, I would second that.
That's a, that's a 30% discount.
Well, before we vote, you know, we're going to open up the public, maybe somebody from public has commented, and then we'll go back and address it, but, you know, let's, guys, let's put this to bed, okay?